Today is October 1st, welcome to the Select Board meeting. I'm Tyler Ward, with me are Bill Kennedy and Bill Taylor, fellow Select Board members. We have Town Administrator Nicole McStay here and Ali Groit's Assistant to the Town Administrator, taking our minutes and providing information if we so need it. We are on air, so speak loudly and clearly, please, for the people watching, if you have any questions. Tonight's agenda, we'll start off with a public hearing pursuant to RSA 79E, consideration of community tax relief incentive application from Catholic Charities for the Close Farm Road residences. I'm sure people have all heard about that. We've seen it at planning board, Jeff Lefkowitz is here with us. And then we'll hear about the, an update on feasibility committee recommendation for the Conval School Board, that study. And then Gail Cromwell, here's Pam joining you as well, and Pam Kingston from Temple School, their study committee, they have a recommendation for school system. And then we'll vote to appoint and reappoint several people to committees, so it was great to have volunteers willing to do all the work for us. And then we'll discuss the River Rock landscaping bid, that's exciting news, we've had a kind of just pavement down there, and it'd be nice to get it to look prettier. And then we have minutes to approve from September 3rd. All right, I'd make a motion that we enter public hearing regarding RSA 79E.
So moved.
All those in there?
Got it.
All right. That was a second from Bill.
Yeah. Great, welcome Jeff.
Good to be here again.
Yeah, we received the application and what would you like to, are you going to make a presentation?
Well, as you all know, this is a, it's an affordable housing project. The vast majority of the units are designed to meet the needs of folks who are earning, well actually, and I'll do the 96 total, we're breaking ground, as you know, well the formal ceremony, groundbreaking ceremony is tomorrow at 12 o'clock. That is for Phase 1, I was just there doing my first round of cleanup, and then we'll get there early tomorrow to do the next round of cleanup. And then we're hopeful that the Housing Authority will grant us reservations for Phase 2, the tax credit reservations for Phase 2, and if that goes well, we'll be able to break ground for that probably spring of this, of next year. So we'll be wrapping up both kind of close together because the Phase 2 is really scheduled for about a 14-month project, that'll go pretty quick because it's just repurposing the existing building with some work around that building. So, but of the 96 units, I'm just going to do this in my head, we have 12 of those units in Phase 1 offer project-based vouchers, so for people who are earning up to 50% of the area median income, or people who are earning up to 30% and are at high risk of homelessness because their situations are very vulnerable, very challenging. The rest of those units, I believe, 49 of those Phase 1 units, that's 64 in Phase 1, 49 if I'm not, or maybe 47 off the top of my head, are reserved for individuals or families earning up to 60%. So really, the vast majority. The Housing Authority wanted us to incorporate some market rate units, so there's five, but they're below market rate, and all of the units come with all utilities. So the residents will not be paying anything beyond the rent itself, electric is included, water, sewer is included. So in Phase 2, it's pretty much the same thing. So in Phase 2, most of the units are set aside for folks earning up to 60%. There will be eight units that will offer project-based vouchers, again, for individuals or families earning up to 50%. There will be four of those, and then individuals or families earning up to 30% and at high risk of homelessness or insecurities. And then the rest will be at 60%. So really, most of the units, and there'll be four units that will be market rate or actually below market rate. Again, the Housing Authority wanted us to have that mix, so we're supporting people at different income bands. But what we are particularly interested in are those that are just struggling, that they're not earning to really keep their housing costs at 30% of their income or below, and that's what this is designed to do. We will be providing all of the support services that are needed for folks living there, particularly the ones that come with project-based vouchers that have higher needs, we'll be providing that with our network of programs and services. As you may have noticed, that the work has begun, it's going at a pretty good clip, and I believe that that Phase 1 project is going to go according to schedule. As far as the property tax incentive, that was, that's a big deal for us, because with these types of projects, there really is no cash flow. The Housing Authority and the Tax Credit Investor, in this case it's EverNorth out of Burlington, Vermont, have very strict rules as far as how we can finance and what we can charge. We don't set the rental rates, nor do we determine the, any increases in those rental rates over time, we don't determine that, somebody else determines that. So the cash flow is, it's basically a break even if we do a good job. So the property tax incentive is a godsend, that's what makes the project work for us. And I understand that the maximum allowable, based on the type of project, is 11 years. I can tell you that the compliance period for, the tax credit compliance period is 15 years, and at that 15-year mark, then we have, Catholic Charities will have the option to basically purchase the building from the entity that owns the building. So we are a member of that entity, but the Tax Credit Investor is also a member of that entity. When we transition the building to 100% ownership Catholic Charities, we will be in a better position to handle the property tax based on how it's calculated for this type of a housing community. So it would be great if you granted us the 11 years, it would really help us if we were able to get that extended for the full 15-year compliance period, because even from years 12 to 15, we still have that real fine line. It doesn't change from 12 years up, but it will change at 15 years beyond, because our debt will go down and we'll be able to handle more property tax.
Before you ask any questions, Danica, do you just want to give a brief summary of what this tax incentive is, what it's meant for?
Well, it's primarily used to incentivize property owners with underutilized properties to kind of get the ball rolling, the only time, to my knowledge, that we've ever used it was for the GAR hall down, down the road. It's a tool that communities can offer developers to be able to revitalize a property, and hopefully the end product is something that's more valuable to tax revenue than what is currently existing. In this case, we have a project that's been approved, plans are signed, sent to the registry, building permits have been approved, so we can fully expect that whatever is built out there will bring in more tax revenue than what's existing. The features of the Community Revitalization Tax Really Incentive are adding housing, adding affordable housing units, or preserving a historic structure, in this case, it meets the first two.
And so Catholic Charities isn't a nonprofit?
We are a nonprofit.
But they'd still pay taxes, I mean...
Nonprofit status does not automatically mean that you have tax exemption or pilot agreement or anything like that. There's a pretty high standard in New Hampshire for allowing a nonprofit entity to enter into a reduced tax type scenario.
Which we call that.
Right. And so with this 79E, that would only be on the improvements that are made to the property, correct? It wouldn't change the current value, which is about 1.8 million between the parcelage issue?
The current tax assessment is what is maintained, and we've built that into our budget, so there will be that tax revenue coming into the top.
Just effectively freezes it for the period of the contract.
Yeah, so in all the improvements that you make on this property, we're not going to realize any tax benefits from that if we grant it for 15 years, so...
One other thing that I'd add is a limitation of Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive is that it can't be applied to TIP districts. So when it was initially, Phil and I talked this morning, that it was initially just a few districts in the downtown, a lot of those properties in the downtown are also encumbered by the downtown TIP, so they're, well, they would be eligible to apply, they can't because they're also in the TIP district. Luckily, this is a project that's not in a TIP district.
What was the term on the post?
Oh, I'm not sure, I think it was something that says...
The original term was five years, yeah. I think that it just expired last year.
Just expired, yeah, and I asked her if she wanted to renew it, and she said, no, we really appreciate it got us going, and we're in a comfortable place to pay their taxes, which is, you know, it worked. All right, any, Phil, any questions?
No.
Do we have, we don't have to make a decision tonight, or we can...
You do not have to make a decision tonight, you've got 45 days to make a decision, so you can hold it until next meeting if you want to think on it a bit and see if any questions percolate between here and there.
Roughly, any idea what the end value is going to be with 96 new units up there? I mean, it's kind of hard to say.
It's kind of hard to say, and there is a methodology for calculating the property taxes for low-income housing tax credit properties. So it's a rather lengthy calculation that I believe it's the Department of Revenue Services came up with, and there's two formulas, and you basically look at, you take the higher of the two, I believe, or whatever that comes out to be. So when it converts to the full tax, we provide, we do those calculations, we share it with the town, and then we go from there.
This is just on the town portion of the taxes, or the full?
Full.
Full?
The, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The town portion you...
Yeah, I was wondering if this exemption would be on just the town portion or the full amount of the state and school?
I think it's for the full amount, that's the request anyways, it's for the full amount.
And my understanding about the taxation mechanisms for low-income housing is that it's either 10% of what is brought in for rental income, or purely the municipal portion of the tax rate. I thought it was whichever was lower.
Oh.
But, but it's been a while since I looked at that RSA.
Me too.
But I believe that's how it's typically calculated for low-income housing communities.
Has our housing subsidy been involved in this at all?
Very much so.
In the project, yes or no, but in...
And in Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive, they were actually who brought it before the planning board to ask that it be expanded beyond the districts that are currently in.
Okay, and that was granted, so...
That was granted at town.
And that was just last year?
This, well, this year, yep, this past May.
That's what made this possible?
I know, it feels like a year ago.
Was to expand it to this property location?
Right, 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 as an incentive. I feel more questions percolating, but we've turned our attention to this, so we don't want to put it off too long, I mean, what, 45 days to make a decision, but it'd be in our November meeting, I suppose.
I think that makes sense unless you want to take it up again sooner.
And we were hoping that we would have this, have approval before we actually started, but obviously you have to go through the process, but this is, in order to make this work, we need to have, we need this, we need this program. We did build into the, into the budget, the current tax, so Phase 1 and Phase 2 will be splitting the current tax assessment, so that revenue will be coming in, but just keep in mind that this is a low-income housing tax credit project, and it works very differently than your traditional housing or any other type of commercial.
Jeff, a couple of questions about the project itself. Catholic Charities, do they intend on managing the housing units themselves, or is there a management company that will be coming in?
Yeah, so we will be providing the resident service coordination, that will be onsite as well as the supportive services. And we have a contract with a company called Alliance Asset Management, which is a subsidiary of CATCH, which is a Concord-based low-income housing tax credit management, development and management firm. And the reason why we did that is because it's very complicated to manage these properties.
Yes.
So they're going to handle the property management and the occupancy management while we are providing direct services, and that's how it's going to work. And we will, over a period of time, we will go through the learning curve, and at some point, I would expect that we will be managing the property, as far as the property itself, but they report to us.
And when you talk, you mentioned supportive services a couple of times, what kind of services will you be offering?
Oh, educational programming, financial literacy programs, mental health programs, access to resources, there's a whole list, I can get that to you, but it's, it's very comprehensive. And it really is based on the needs of the population, so when an individual or family move in, they, within about a week, they are, they meet with the resident service coordinator to see what resources or needs that they may or may not need, which could also change over time. We know that people on the lower income brackets tend to need more support, and then once we get a sort of a general profile of the resident population, we can develop programs to meet those needs. But there will also be resident councils, resident groups, that will also be able to look at what the, what the community needs, and to be able to work with the resident service coordinator to develop programs. That will be provided right onsite.
We should mention that we have some federal monies available for workforce development, so it could be a component of your services.
That'd be great.
Sure. We hold classes out of, there's a Max acre space?
Oh yeah, right across the street.
Exactly, that's right.
Yeah.
So maybe walk over to classes.
We have, we have relationships, and we're building relationships, the Quanacopia Project, River Center, Max T, we have a whole list, and that's what we want to do, is we want to integrate this living community within Peterborough, so you've got, you know, you've got folks that are going to be moving in, being able to work local businesses, but also to volunteer and get engaged with what's going on in the community. So the closer we can integrate, the better for the community at large, but also the folks that are going to be living there.
Now, you know, Catholic Charities obviously is, you know, has its roots in a religious organization. My experience in the past has been that Catholic Charities does not have any kind of limitations on folks that can apply to it, would that be true?
Not at all, not at all, no. It's, it's based on, you know, values, it's values, but no, not at all, everybody, no matter, regardless of background, beliefs, preferences, there is no limit.
If there was, it'd be discriminatory given against the law.
It's nice to reaffirm.
Yeah, yeah, and it's just not what the organization is based on.
No, I mean, I, as Human Services Director, you know, Ali's our Human Services Assistant Director, so we're, you know, very familiar, I've been very familiar with Catholic Charities and what they've offered in the past, especially, you know, in the Manchester-Nashua area. It's great to see you guys doing more work out here, really appreciate it because it's definitely support that we get certain use.
Well, sure, we appreciate that too, and like I said, we will provide whatever services that the community needs, either directly or through partnerships with River Center or these other organizations. So we want to, we want to explore a model of living that really helps people to thrive and succeed. So it's not just a physical space, it's the culture, it's the community, it's the support that's there.
Thank you.
What is the oldest Catholic Charities project like this? How long have they, have any been around, and can we expect a perpetuity here, or after 15 years it's...
No, 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 we've signed, we've signed a, we've signed a commitment that we will be operating this the way it is for 75 years. So it's not going anywhere, and we're not going anywhere. Yeah, it's, it's, it's there for a very, very long time, and it's just going to be in perpetuity. This kind of need for folks who are earning at these different levels, that's going to be a need for a very long time.
Sure, right, that's, that's the, you know, the dollar, it's downed over the years, so, you know, even if people get raises, there is a limit. Okay, so you had a good, good point, Bill, maybe we hold off, make a decision, and next door following me?
Yeah, absolutely, and any questions that you have, send them to us, we'll make sure they get answered.
And we'll meet again two weeks, if we need to.
If you need to, or, you know, certainly we'll be meeting again in November.
Would that damage your time too, that badly, if we...
Well, we have to keep going.
Well, you can.
Yeah, so I was, I was hoping to know, actually before we break, broke ground and before we put our financing together, but it was just fairly recent that the, that the program was extended to this property, I think, you know, it wasn't that long ago. So we were kind of working with a tricky timetable, but, you know, we were committed to continuing with this with the hope that, obviously, we qualify for the program, the project qualifies for the program. My hope is that you will consider not only granting us the program, but also allowing it to go for the 15 years, which is the compliance period. So that's, that's what will help make the project work.
And I'm sure you folks will be, we'll be seeing you tomorrow, 12 o'clock.
Yeah, we're going to help you move that groundbreaking up there.
Terrific, terrific. Well, I was just over there cleaning up, so I'll be going back there, do some more cleanup.
Has this been rezoned? It still says industrial class on the property card.
It's not been rezoned, they, they were granted a variance to build housing in the industrial zone though, yeah.
We did go through all the approval process, conservation?
Oh yeah.
Going in via...
Go one way.
No, actually, I want this project to move along. And if it's contingent on us deciding about this tax, it seems like a very long time, but it's a good project.
How long has it been sitting empty, at least 10 years?
I couldn't tell you.
It was being partially rented out about three years ago. I think that...
So plain?
Yes, so plain had it.
Oh, right.
And they were moving out slowly, they'd gone and looked at it in 2019, I think, or 2020, and, you know, maybe, maybe 20% of the space was being used at that point, and it was, they were rapidly moving out, so...
But before they were there, it was empty?
It had been empty for quite a while, it had been a while since the Millard Group had been in there, I think they were the last tenants, or last, they owned it at that point, they were the last ones to fully occupy it, and they moved out, I want to say at least 10 years ago, or 15, it's been quite a long time.
Right. Well, I'm just thinking.
You know, and, yes, I suppose 15 years would be considered a long time when you're talking about the value of what's being approved, but there is the continuation of the existing tax revenue. But think of, think of it also from the standpoint of the 96 families that will be moving in that desperately need this type of housing, and the businesses locally that desperately need to recruit and retain folks.
Yeah, it, sorry, okay, yeah, we've heard it, I get it, I totally understand. Is it legal for us to say, yeah, 15 years, when the statute or whatever says 11? I mean, we can extend it after 11, but is that even like legal avenue to say, okay, we know that the limit is 11, but we're going to grant you 15?
It's a good question, I'm not sure.
That's a question. I mean, I'm certainly not.
I can't, I can't speak to that without getting someone way more knowledgeable than me on some...
Right, well, so, I mean, with that, with that said, I'd be okay with the 11, but I also want to approve something that is not within our right to approve and have it be created.
I agree, yeah, and certainly we can come back, we have 11 years to do so, you know, back and say, yeah, you got another 40 years on it.
Yeah, that's fine, plus if you're going to be here first, at least 75.
Which is interesting, because the agency is 75, well, actually, no, it passed its 75th year several years ago, but 75 plus another 75.
Anybody in the audience have anything, questions? All right, so is that your motion, 11 years?
Yeah.
You want to second that?
I'll second it. Can we close the public hearing first?
Do we close the public hearing?
Yes, make a motion to close, well, ask for a public, if any questions.
I just did.
Sorry.
All right, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Okay.
All right, now we can vote out with your motion?
Yeah, my motion would be to grant pursuant to RSA 79-E, Community Tax Relief Incentive Application for Catholic Charities for Close Farm Road residences for a period of 11 years.
With the guarantee?
About with the maximum period, so like, give us a chance to figure out exactly what the maximum period is?
We can come back to it.
I'm saying the 11, because it's not going to write into something, a hypothetical. So that was my motion.
And that would guarantee the affordable and the workforce housing stipulations?
Yeah, I believe that's a requirement.
That's our requirement, yeah.
Okay.
Now, would it be helpful if we had perhaps Jim Callahan do some work as to what would be involved in another four years?
Well, we got 11 years to figure that out, we should just handle this motion first, probably?
Okay. You did second?
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Hold this in favor.
All right.
All right, great.
Okay, that's great, thank you very much.
Go break down.
Yes.
All right, we'll see you tomorrow.
I know, at least one show.
Thank you, thank you very much. Make sure it's clean too, Catholic likes a clean job, so.
Thank you. Glad to change out my work clothes to Bill. All right.
Depends on why not, you're holding the shovel.
All right, up next, we, now, who will be speaking on the feasibility committee recommendation? At you, Bill?
I don't think we have. No, I think Janine Nester said that she was planning on attending.
She's sometimes not so good about it.
Move forward to...
We've all read it in the paper, I suppose.
Yeah, is there any, are there any questions about the decision? It was, it was not too cold, but close in terms of voting, to deny both Dublin and Francis Towne for feasibility to withdraw from the Conval School District. I might also mention the fact that from the town's perspective, our taxes would go up by 8% if they, the both of them actually left the Conval School District. So that was a consideration, certainly not my part. Other than that, they have committees who will be submitting, I presume, motions to the Department of Education to grant them the ability to leave, which then would require approval through the Select Board and then find... approval through the Select Board and then finally through town meetings, presumably in March.
Near towns, those two towns.
No, well, all towns.
Oh, all towns.
Yeah, okay, all towns.
I'm sorry, so it has to be approved by all Select Boards in the district? Or, I don't understand. So, the minority, I'm sorry.
The Minority Report.
The Minority Report would be submitted to DOE and then would need to be approved by their Select Boards and town meeting, or all Select Boards and all town meetings?
All town meetings.
Interesting.
Yes.
Was something about that's chances?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's the update. All right, welcome, Gail. You're going to present. I heard it the other night at the Selecten Advisor Committee.
Yes, I have some additional papers. Did you all get a copy of my report?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I've all read it.
I have plot plan for South Meadow School, which I didn't have in the report. I'm going to give you a check of this, two of them. And here's one for Great Brook as well, which you've seen Mr. Ward, as you're up living very nice. It's kind of interesting to see these forklands, to kind of visualize the how these schools might be realized. And then, of course, here's something that you will dearly love, which shows that you paid $17 million to Conville.
We already knew that.
You knew that. That's about 35% of the total.
Yep.
It's actually 30.
So, therefore, you should be very interested in what we have to say here.
Not to mention our lost revenues for the lands that all these schools are on.
I mean, we're, Temple is complaining about costs, and we only pay $3 million, but it's still killing us. I want to tell you that our group was appointed a committee last May because our Select Board said, "We don't know what to do. Why don't you think about it and tell us?" So, we thought about withdrawal, and we couldn't find any real interest in doing that. And they said also, "Well, why don't you think of maybe something else?" And so, we said, "Okay, could we start a conversation on costs?" Because costs are really what everybody complains about. And so, we're hoping to get a conversation going. And what happened was that as we actually got going, we started looking at the enrollment in the buildings and discovered that Conville was at 63% of its capacity. And that was really quite shocking, because we've spent an awful lot of money on the Conville High School building. It's a large building. It was built for 1,200 kids, has a top dining hall, all the top classrooms, all the... The last bond that we had was for expanding all the sports gym and all of that. So, I mean, we've spent a lot of money on that building, and to have it only at 63% capacity seemed really not good. So, we said, "Okay, how are we going to deal with that?" So, we looked at the... And this is what Prismatic did not do. You all remember that the school board paid $200,000 to this outside company, Prismatic. And they came up with a recommendation of closing the four small schools. They did not seem to have ever looked at what to do with the bigger schools. So, we've got three large buildings. We have the high school, and we have the two middle schools, all of which are under capacity. So, thinking about this, it seemed to be to us, the smart thing to do would be to move seventh and eighth grade into the high school from both of the middle schools. Now, in the past, combining the two middle schools has been thought about a number of times. But now, with the drop in enrollment, perhaps it's time to look at it again. So, that was our proposal, that we move grades seven and eighth from both middle schools into the high school, which still puts it under about 1,000 kids. And then, what is left is you would have sixth grade and fifth grades conceivably be in the South Meadow Building. It turns out that if you look at the last page of our report with the numbers, that is really the distinctive thing about the numbers, because it shows how it would all fit. There was, you've seen this page with these numbers in it. Okay. So, if indeed we were to move seventh and eighth grade into the high school, that has some advantages of not only filling up the high school, where you have great facilities, but also, I think a lot of us have been concerned in the past with the quality of what's going on. Maybe the high school teachers are a little bit more apt to do high-level teaching. If you ask people in my town, "Why isn't your kid in Conville?", chances are, they will say, "We don't think it's good enough." You know, and that's sad. It should be good enough, particularly if you have a smart kid. You want the best for them, and that's what's not happening. We don't, I don't believe there's any sort of program for the smart kids to go into the high school. So, maybe if you have seventh and eighth grade along with all the high school, you'll have enough cohesion to be able to really improve that situation. So, that was our proposal there. What that means, then, is that the PES building could be, the children in that, which is only 257 students, could be relocated. I never want to say close anybody's school. Relocate into the South Meadow Building. And that would then open up a very interesting possibility for you all. What we're trying to do, well, when we went to Antrim, we had the same problem with Antrim, because right now, the entire Antrim Elementary School can move into the Great Brook Building right now without changing anything, and the building is not needed. So, in Antrim's case, they use the building now for their recreation program, not fully. They use it in the summer, they use it in the mornings. So, our proposal to them was, would you think? We're not trying to ask anybody to do anything. Just think, would this be a smart idea for you to have the Antrim Elementary School building, which is one of our oldest buildings, be used by your recreation department? So, they're thinking about that, where we will go with that. In your case, the possibility is even more interesting, because you've got an elementary school up on the hill, which is basically a historical artifact. I don't believe you've got a nickel in tax revenue from it. So, if you were able to relocate PES into the South Meadow Building, then you all would have that lot, you'd have to buy it, I suppose you would get a fair price for it. You would have a lot up there ready to be developed, where you might put, oh, gosh, five or 10 or 12 houses. Think of all the tax revenue. So, for years, I went to St. Peter's, and I saw what happened when we moved from St. Peter's to Divine Mercy down on the highway. Whoever the developers had bought that lot, put in a dozen houses, you all got some money from that. That's good. So, it's something that you might conceivably want to consider, you know? Will this go anywhere with the school board? I don't know. Probably not likely. They don't like ideas that are other than theirs. But what I can tell you is that they will all fit. The other thing that I've done since, Mr. Ward, you were at the meeting when we had the SAC meeting. Since then, I got ahold of the budget for Conville, and I wanted to answer the question, what is it that we spend right now on PES and AES, those buildings? Not the teaching, just maintaining the building. So, I looked it up, added up all the numbers. It costs $436,000 to pay for the heat, the electricity, the water, the janitors, the basic upkeep of the PES building. That would be a big savings to Conville. Antrim Elementary is much smaller. They would only, it costs only $281,000 to do. So, right away, if the school board would do this, and here's the interesting thing, if you read Article 5 of the Articles of Agreement, it looks to us that you could do it, just if the school board said, "We will do it." You don't have to go to vote in March to do it. And I'm sure that they will want to check that with their town attorney, with their school board attorneys. And I hope that the school board attorneys will maybe say that, you know? There's always a fear that you get what you ask for and that they won't want to do it, but I don't know. I mean, I have served eight years on the Conville School Board. It was very difficult, you know? It's hard to get them to do something that is not their own idea. I'm sorry to say that, but that's the way I feel about it. So, in other words, the cost savings right away to Conville are in the range of over $700,000 per year. Okay, so, that's a nice piece of change. You know, it's not a lot, but I believe that once they actually made these transitions into the other buildings, that then they would discover other savings that could happen. For example, if you look at the co-curricular program, which is wonderful, it gives kids a chance to do something other than their classroom. We spend right now $180,000 on co-curricular activities in all of the three schools. If you had seventh and eighth grade in the high school, then you could take just one of the co-curricular programs, which is how to do recycling. Instead of having three programs, one for seventh grade, one for eighth grade, one for the high school, you have just one. You know, you save money. You know, you discover things that you can save money on once these buildings are rearranged. Take a copier machine. I know in Temple, we're faced with the prospect of having to spend $12,000 for a new copier. That hurts us, you know? But in the case of the Conville, do you need, how many copiers do you need? Maybe you reduce the total. There, I believe that there are going to turn out to be savings that they can anticipate right now until they really think about it. Now, Mr. Ward, you were there, and after we left, we thought the discussion was over, so we were disappointed that you continued afterwards. But apparently, after we left, some of the school board members said, "Well, this is totally impractical, because the furniture and the cabinets and stuff, the desk that you need for a pre-kindergarten kid won't be what's in Great Brook School or South Meadow School, so it's all got to be done over." I have total confidence in Tim Grossick, their Facilities Director, that he can figure out how to do that. You would pick up the desk, move them to the South Meadow Building or to the middle school building, and you would figure out how to cut the cabinets down if you needed to. This is not an impassable project. So, that's what we are proposing, that we think it can be done. If you look at all the numbers, we believe it will fit. We have no way to convince anybody of anything. We simply are trying to get this conversation going, that Conville costs are too high for us. They're killing my talent, for sure. We pay 72% of our budget goes to Conville. You all aren't quite so bad. Most of the towns are around 65% to 70%. But it hurts. So, if we could somehow get a conversation going, and you guys are very important, because you've got four school board members, four, if you could somehow say to them, "Hey, maybe this isn't a really stupid idea." So, that's all we're asking you. I'm not asking you to vote on anything. I just want you to understand what it is that we're really talking about. We think that we could save some money down the road. We think that we could improve education, actually, by doing this, you know, by focusing on getting these kids together. Getting, you know, kids learn a lot from each other. That's good. So, that's our idea. Can I answer any questions from you all?
Well, my first question is, you're asking Peterborough to make changes to its school environment.
Yes.
How does that impact Temple?
Well, it doesn't really. That's why, and in fact, when our school board, when our Select Board, I should say, appointed our committee, they said, "We like your report, but we want you to go to Peterborough and to Antrim and explain it to them, because their buildings are the ones you're talking about." So, it is your building. For Temple, it doesn't affect us anything. It said, "Maybe we can save money." It's a possibility that perhaps our fifth grade might return to Temple, which we would love dearly, I can tell you. And Francistown, I noticed in their proposal to withdraw, they would like to keep their fifth grade. We know Dublin keeps their fifth grade. It turns out that if you put the seventh and eighth grade into the high school, I have the current numbers here, if you put the students who are presently in PES into the South Meadow Building, that's 257 students, the fifth grade students of PES, of Peterborough, would be 50, and then you would have to have the sixth graders for all, everybody else, and that's 136. You add up those three numbers, and you've got 443, and that's just about the ideal number for South Meadow School. There was the numbers can be made to work. Now, for Temple, the advantage is, can we save some money? Can we get our fifth grade back? Although, that's not a really critical part of the decision. Can we improve education? What can we do to get this conversation going? Because something's got to be done, because the costs of Conville just keep going up and up and up.
So, have you considered the educational impact of moving seventh and eighth grade into a high school environment?
No, we have not. We figured that the...
If you talk to educators, they are totally against it.
Well, it's an interesting question of why they are against it. Do you mean that our current school board is against it?
Because of the...
Of what?
I've talked to a number of educators, not just school board members, educators, and they say it's a terrible idea, because the emotional and physical development between those two groups is huge.
Well, the high school building is ideally built so that the classrooms can be separated. You could maintain a separation between seventh and eighth grade and the rest of the high school. But when you think about it, this is the way most of the schools in this country are organized.
No, they organize this as kindergarten through eighth, and then ninth through...
Yeah, okay. So, there you have, if you have a K-8 school, then you have these kids together, seventh and eighth grade, you know? But this is not impossible. If you talk to...
No, it's the seventh and eighth graders are, well, I don't want to get into this conversation necessarily, but it's the seventh and eighth graders going into a high school environment, being intermingled with ninth through 12th graders. It's quite a huge thing. I just want you to consider that, okay?
Yeah, well...
As part of your whole process here, you've looked at the money. As a town, Temple was unwilling to give up their school, even though it's horribly under...
Well, you know, when we were at the meeting the other night, they criticized for us that. But we say, "Look, we can't put a five-year-old kid on a school bus for three hours a day." No, but no town is going to do that. I mean, it's bad enough that we put a sixth grader, fifth grader, sixth grader on the bus for three hours a day to come to South Meadow. That's bad enough. But the sentiment in our town was strong, and we would just simply leave if that became a problem, something that they required us to do. I mean, people in town feel very strongly about that. So, we're sorry. We're sorry that that's the way it is.
I fully understand the politics of it. I sat on the feasibility committee, so we belabored these arguments for many, many, many hours. Is there any further?
I think, yeah, certainly a lot of information and some good ideas, and, of course, the ideas have been rolling for decades on this. We're not going to make a decision tonight. I do thank you, Gail, for coming out and presenting this to the full board.
I'll keep you any further?
Yeah, you, one thing that struck me was, and you had mentioned it at the Selecten Advisor Committee the other night, that there was discussion that went on after you guys left. And I was wondering, that was my first meeting on the SAC, and so, it struck me that, is that a normal occurrence, where someone will come in and there'll be a discussion, and then when they leave, there's more discussion on that topic? Is that a regular thing? It seemed out of order for me.
Yeah, that should be controlled by the chair.
Okay.
And it wasn't my experience that we would have that kind of conversation.
Okay, because it was a little, you know...
We found that, we regretted that we left too early. We thought you all were moving on to another topic.
Yeah, and there wasn't much more discussion, but I did find it odd, and I appreciate you pointing that out, and maybe I'll mention it the next week.
Did you guys elect a chair?
Oh, the guy who wasn't there, and then made John Roberts, who was there, the vice chair.
You moved Mike up.
Yeah, well, I didn't. I didn't vote, because I didn't know him.
He's from Greifield, and they have their Select Board meetings almost every week, but they have it on that same day, so...
Okay. Anyway, yeah, thank you for coming out, and thank you for the work you guys are doing. And, you know, everybody's putting in a lot of time.
Well, thank you for giving us a chance to talk to you. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks, Gail.
And we won't talk about you after you... Thank you. That's interesting. Now, what's your next step? Are you going to be presenting this to the school board?
Well, so far, Mr. Dunning has refused to put us on the agenda. We are, I should have said at the beginning that the reason why my pal Kingston couldn't come, my committee seemed to have fallen apart. One of them called me this morning and said, "I just walked into a door and lost my front tooth." So, our next step is really just to talk about this with people and with towns, and try to get this going. I think the real question is, can the high school building be suitably, in your case, divided so that these populations are kept separate? That's the question. So, we'll see. So, we're just going to continue on with our quest all the way over here. I said a quick prayer to St. Jude, who is the... You're laughing. You're laughing. You know who St. Jude is. St. Jude is the saint for hopeless causes. Okay.
Thanks, Gail. All right, up next, we have people willing to volunteer in committees. Still, even. I'd make a motion that we appoint Maude Anderson Terry Reeves to Parks Committee.
Reappoint?
Yeah, reappointing on that Parks Committee for ever.
Yeah, and then appoint and reappoint Sarah Steimer, Keller, Gary Gorski, David Ogden, Richard Lessor, James Kelly, and Leonard McDonald to the Capital Improvements Program Committee.
Second.
All those in there? All right, Danica, what do we got going on in Riverwalk?
So one of the things that we forgot to ask of you guys when we presented that landscaping plan was the ability for us to execute a contract with a landscape company. So Seth is going to be here tonight to kind of speak a little bit to the landscape company that we're hoping to go into contract with. Their name is Greeley Farms. Ross Kukish did the landscaping, I believe, for the library. Seth is very familiar with Ross, very comfortable with their work. Worked closely with Tim Rose. Their bed came way under our budget, which we like to see. They're eager to get started this fall, which I'm told by the landscape architect is preferred so that everything has the ability to really get its roots in before spring. So we're looking to be able to enter into a contract with Greeley Farms.
My, my understanding was that the plan itself wasn't finalized yet. Is that true?
The plan is finalized.
Because there were some elements that we had some questions about, like the children's play area?
So this doesn't include installing the children's play, uh, play area? So that was something that we left up to the greater downtown to decide on whether or not they wanted to execute. As I recall, that meeting when we talked about the design, the only real revision was, was creating an area for snow storage for Tim.
Right.
That's been adjusted on the plan. So the proposal that we have is just to install the vegetation itself, which came in way under budget. We had originally spoken with the Parks Committee to give us their recommendation of what they foresaw that budget as being. They expected it would be about three times the cost if it's coming quite.
That's great, and I look forward to having that area of landscaping done. I walk through there all the time. It's not that bad, but.
Oh, it's not, you know, it's a parking lot. So does that mean with the lower budget, instead of a planter in that asphalt ring, we're going to have a bonfire pit?
There's no bonfire pit. Yeah.
You just have to bring your portable down.
Right, right.
Okay, so who are you looking to get to authorize this here?
Just a motion?
I think we're just looking, well, Seth would be the one entering into the agreement, whose DPW will be executed.
I make a motion that we allow or authorize Seth to enter into agreement with
Greeley Farms.
Greeley Farms. To, where is it?
Right. Riverwalk Landscape.
Riverwalk Landscape.
I trust, I trust the guy. I'll, I'll sign.
He is literally at the street.
All those in there? Hi.
The landscaping guy, you mean?
Yeah, he lives on
I guess both do, right?
Great. Where's he live? Greeley Farm?
Nope, right up the hill. Just right up near neighbor, right walking distance from your house. The hills, I have it.
Chain?
Nope, it's off of Chain. First one.
Orchard.
Orchard Hill.
Lookout.
Lookout, Lookout Hill.
I'll keep listing off of this.
There we go, round of applause. I make a motion that we vote to approve the Select Board minutes of September third, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Nicely written. All those in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Oi.
Thank you.
Look at that. It's not even six o'clock yet. Thanks, Dan.
Written, thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
I make that motion. Oh, there you go. Ah, it's my favorite.
Motion to stop getting paper. We have everything electronically.
Okay, excellent. So what are you going to run for the school?